Okay. We'll call the meeting of the Capitol Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Story.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Chairperson Newman.
Here. Okay, the first item, oh, well, first we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under oral communications, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then next item is public comments. An opportunity for anyone to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Step forward, please. Give us your name.
Eric Van Alstine. It occurred to me that in seeing the restaurant across from Brown's Ranch being reactivated, there's no crosswalk anywhere along there from Brown's Ranch over to the mall. So there's no safe way of getting across the street, especially when traffic's going a little bit fast. So I think it's an issue that probably would be a good thing to look at.
Okay, thank you. So let me drop back here and announce that this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org, and our technician tonight is Lynn Dunton. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and when you come up to speak, please sign in at the podium. Thank you. Okay. Commission comments, any? Commissioner Story? None. Staff comments?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to recognize Ryan Safdie. Tonight will be his last Planning Commission hearing. Ryan has received a job offer and accepted to become an associate planner in Los Gatos. It's a great opportunity for him. It's, I think, less than 10 miles from his house. Step up, better title, better pay. So while we're very disappointed to lose him, join me and congratulate him when you get an opportunity. And also, I think most of you are also aware, we're also losing our building official also in a couple of weeks. Brian Van Son has accepted a position up in Belvidere, California, up near, I think it's Tiburon. So he will be leaving as well. So we're going to be all short-staffed over the next six weeks to two and a half months, depending how long it takes to fill the vacancies. So we're asking everyone to be patient with us while we work through some of these staffing changes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the commission, Ryan, I want to thank you for the good work you've done while you were here and wish you the best of luck in your next adventure.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to the minutes of the May 4, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
I would move approval as drafted if there's no discussion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Okay, that takes us to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar tonight. Taking them backwards, one is 614 Capitol Avenue, a conditional use permit to convert an existing mixed-use building to multifamily residence. 4100 Auto Plaza Drive, this is a design permit and conditional use permit, and I think there was some additional information that staff wanted to convey.
Yes, I wanted to clarify that the monument sign is approximately 90 square feet. It was incorrect in the staff report stating 64 square feet. Thank you.
Okay, so with that correction, we also have the Capitol Mall redevelopment request to continue to September 7. And then lastly, is an item at 212 Monterey Avenue, which is a design permit application for an exterior remodel in addition of 304 square feet to an existing building. And this, for those of you who may be here for this, this item was actually discussed at a prior Planning Commission meeting and was continued for purposes of a variance, and then the variance was withdrawn, so now it's on the consent agenda. If anybody is interested in this, they should be aware of that. And then I'm going to ask whether any of the commissioners or anyone in the audience would like to have a full hearing on any of these items.
I'd like to pull Item C.
That would be the Auto Plaza Drive, so that will be moved to the bottom of the agenda. Is there anyone here on that item? I may want to rethink that because the public hearings are going to be quite possibly lengthy, and maybe we ought to take the Auto Plaza first. Does anybody have any problem with that? Any other items anyone want to remove? If not, that'll leave Items A, B, and D on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve those?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So those three items are passed unanimously, and we will move on then to a public hearing on Consent Calendar Item C, 4100 Auto Plaza Drive. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you this evening is a conditional use permit for a car wash at the Subaru dealership at 4100 Auto Plaza Drive. Also included in this application is a sign permit for a monument sign. This slide shows the existing dealership. This is recently remodeled. It has a new iconic tower on the front of it, and if you've driven by it recently, it's almost completion. They're just finishing up some landscaping under the previous permit that was issued earlier in the year. The area in blue is also an existing building. The applicant is proposing a new car wash, shown in orange, so a couple of the, well, a few of the parking spaces will be removed in that area for the new car wash. And then they're also proposing a new ramp that goes between the mechanics area and where they display cars. So that also will be taking out parking spaces. In total, 12 parking spaces will be removed with this application. And they lease the space next door, where I believe, I want to say Kia used to be located right on the corner of Gross Road. They lease that for additional parking. So the Subaru has a, I think they've got two more years in their current lease, and then options for additional, an additional five years. And I think there were two options for that. So in the foreseeable 12-year future, they could continue those leases. The other part of this application is a monument sign. There was a monument sign that was approved in the recent application that you looked at. It was a replacement. First, I'll go into the car wash. The car wash is designed with split-faced CMU. On the bottom, it'll be the rough split-faced CMU, and then the top, there'll be four rows of, three rows of silver smooth-faced CMU and one row of the Subaru blue CMU at the top. It's a very basic building. They're using the color schemes to complement the other building, and that was something that came out of our Arkansas meeting that they were willing to implement at first. It was all just gray. And then there's an open gril roll-up door on the front and back of the building. This is the Subaru existing sign, so it's almost five feet tall and 10 feet across, so about 50 square feet. And that will be replaced with a taller sign that's eight and a half, or almost nine feet tall and 11 feet wide, so it's approximately, actually, I think it was 10 feet wide. So it's approximately 90 feet there. So for that monument sign, the requirement is that it cannot go beyond 60 feet or eight feet in height, of which they're asking to go beyond both of those standards. The Planning Commission must make findings that it's necessary and appropriate to allow the business to be competitive with other businesses of similar nature located elsewhere. And the special signage will not have a significant adverse impact on the character and integrity of the surrounding area. So for comparisons, we looked at the Toyota next door. They have some larger signs actually on the building. They do have a monument sign that's oversized as well. So it also, because of the unique location, that it's on a dead-end street, this standard has been utilized for the applications along that street in the past because it is on a dead-end street. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the application for the CUP for the car wash and the monument sign.
Any questions? Those staff?
No persons.
If not, this will open the public hearing, and the applicant seems occupied at the moment. Does the applicant have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to address this item? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and when I close the public hearing, that means that there'll be no further public input, so if you have anything to say, now is the time. Okay. Public hearing is closed, and Commissioner Story, since you pulled it, maybe?
Yes, yes. Let's get to the chase, and the reason I pulled it is concerning the monument sign and the request for a variance for the monument sign, and I just wanted to have a separate vote on that. I mean, it already exceeds our minimum requirements of 60 square feet, as well as does the Toyota sign. That's already been approved. That's eight by eight. But this one now is going to be 50 percent, I mean, larger than the minimum approved under our zoning ordinance. I'm just concerned that it's going to, in comparison to what is there with the Toyota sign, I certainly get the concept of trying to be visible and viewed by the public. I think there's lots of signage on the top of the buildings there. I'm just concerned about this causing variance creep because this is larger now than the Toyota sign. They're going to want to come in and now get a sign that's equivalent to the Subaru sign, and then we're going to be just that much larger. I don't see that it adds a whole lot to keep it within the size of the Toyota sign. That's why I pulled it. But I don't think I have anything more to add, but would just ask for a separate vote and discussion on that item if commissioners were so inclined.
Right, so I guess Commissioner Story is requesting a separate vote, so let's do it that way, just to make it clean. Motion to approve the application except for the monument sign.
I'll move. Approval?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then second motion is to approve or not approve the monument sign.
I certainly understand Commissioner Story's concern about this. I also, you know, we kind of set presence for this one zoning area, this, you know, this auto row, and I would love to see us sell a lot more cars and bring some retail, and as I'm sure the owners would. So while I understand the concept of this variance creep, I would, I don't have an issue with it and don't have a problem approving the sign as designed.
Do you want to put that into a motion?
I can. I'll make a motion that we approve the monument sign as designed.
Got a comment from staff?
I just wanted to clarify that it's a geographically constrained areas. The criteria are not a variance within this application. Thank you. I'll second the motions on table.
All right. Any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's three. Passed is three to one. Okay, so that'll take us to our first public hearing, which is an application for a design permit at 5055 Jewell Street for a first-floor addition and construction of a new second floor to an existing one-story residence with variance requests to parking and driveway dimensions located in the R1 district. Staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before, here's an application for a design permit for a first-floor addition and construction of a new second story to an existing one-story residence with variance requests for both parking and driveway dimensions. And as mentioned, this property is located in the R1 single-family residential zoning So here you can see the existing property conditions. The existing 984-square-foot, single-story residence has a detached garage along the rear of the property with the concrete driveway connecting to Jewell, to Jewell Street. Here's the proposed site plan. The applicant's proposing to expand the front of the existing residence by 179 square feet. That's shown in blue. And also proposing a 473-square-foot second story, shown in red. Here's the proposed front elevation. The proposed home would use a mix of vertical board and baton siding as well as wooden shingle siding. The front of the residence would have a trellis-covered porch connected to the front living room. Here you can see the east side elevation. Location of the existing detached garage is highlighted in green. So as mentioned, the existing residence has a detached garage at the rear of the property, and that's highlighted in green, which is accessed by a 62-foot-long driveway. The driveway is slightly over nine feet in width at the front of the property, but decreases to under nine feet along the side of the home. Uncovered parking spaces in sidewalk-exempt neighborhoods must be a minimum of nine by 18 feet. Therefore, the driveway along the side of the home is too narrow to fit a legal parking space. The existing property contains one full-sized uncovered space within the front of the driveway, and that's highlighted in blue. The detached garage is also undersized and does not meet dimension standards for a covered parking space. Covered parking spaces are required to be a minimum of 10 by 20, and the existing garage is 12 by 18. Including the garage, the proposal has three undersized parking spaces, highlighted in red, and one legal space, highlighted in blue. As mentioned, the existing driveway is roughly nine feet in width and extends all the way to the side property line. However, code requires driveways serving rear yard garages to be a minimum of 11 feet in width. That would be nine feet for a paved driveway, highlighted in blue, and two feet for a landscape strip, shown in green. The proposed driveway configuration does not comply with code. The applicant's requesting a variance to the minimum dimensions for covered parking and driveway width pursuant to code. Planning Commission may grant a variance when it finds a special circumstance applicable to the subject property and where strict application of the code would deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by others in the vicinity. So the applicant's requested a variance to both minimum covered parking size and driveway dimensions in order to maintain the existing driveway and detached garage configuration. The applicant provided a written request for the variance, explaining that there is no option to bring the undersized detached garage into conformance without a variance. Extending the garage an additional two feet in the front would further increase the existing non-conforming side yard setback and also create a nonconformity with the minimum separation requirement between structures. The applicant's variance request states that the only alternative to the parking variance would be to build an attached garage at the front of the residence. And here's a little schematic of what that would look like, which they argue would be less in keeping with the character of the neighborhood than would be preserving the detached garage. The applicant reasons that although the parking spaces would be slightly undersized, the variance would increase off-street parking. This image here shows an SUV parked in the existing driveway along the side of the home. Lastly, the variance request states that allowing the detached garage to be undersized and allowing the existing driveway configuration to remain would not constitute the grant of a special privilege since neighboring properties similarly have detached garages along the side and rear setback lines that appear to be undersized and also have driveways without landscaping. The following slides show examples of jewel box properties with detached garage and driveways that appear to be nonconforming. And here are some additional properties. Staff has no objections to allowing the undersized garage and driveway to continue to provide required parking. As you can see, several neighboring properties appear to not comply with garage dimensions, and a large portion of the neighborhood does not have a landscape strip along their driveway. Therefore, the variance would not be inconsistent with privileges currently enjoyed by others in the vicinity. However, staff cannot identify any unique circumstances associated with the property to make these variance findings. The property is regularly shaped, 40 by 80 feet. It's flat, and it's of standard size for properties in the jewel box neighborhood. There's nothing prohibiting the applicant from redesigning the project to comply with zoning code requirements. So although there are no unique circumstances applicable to the property, it is worth noting that other properties in this neighborhood have received similar variances. 4590 Crystal Street received a variance to the covered parking requirement in 1980 and also a variance to reduce uncovered parking dimensions in 2005. 4815 Jewell Street received a variance to reduce uncovered parking dimensions in 2004, and the other two also received variances to reduce uncovered parking dimensions. It is also worth noting that the existing garage door is only seven foot, five inches. The garage door does not function, and there is a sink within the existing garage. If the Planning Commission decides to approve the variances, staff recommends adding conditions that the sink be removed and that a 10-foot-wide functioning garage door be installed along the front. Based on the strict interpretation of variance law, staff cannot make findings to support either variance request. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the variance requests and thus deny application at 5055 Jewell Street without prejudice and with direction for the applicant to resubmit revised plans at a later date. I'm available if you have any questions. The applicant and owner are also here as well.
I have a couple of questions, Ryan. The existing ones that you showed pictures of that are noted, going back, all of these seem to be older homes, not recently remodeled. We have granted variances for additions to these properties.
It doesn't appear so. They do, they do look like older homes.
Okay. And the next slide with the ones that did receive variances, were the variances, it looks like in at least a couple of them, the variances could possibly have been in length relative to a setback versus in width? Is that?
So the bottom two, I know for sure, were due to the length requirement of the driveway.
Okay.
And then the other two are records just simply didn't specify.
Okay. Well, 4815 Jewel being a two-car garage, it would seem, that would make sense. The 4590 Crystal, it's unclear to me. But in the two that we looked at that have the long driveway, there's a landscaping strip in the middle. Was that mentioned in the variance? Do you remember?
There was no mention of the landscaping strip in any of these variances.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I had a question or two. So I don't, I'm not sure if it was in your report. How old is this house?
It was not in my report. I'd have to ask.
I assume that you're the applicant and, or some, okay. Well, you'll have a chance because it's best if you're in the audience that you speak during the public participation so we can get your name and get you on the record. Okay? So what would be the parking requirements for the house as it currently sits under today's
I believe it is the two uncovered spaces, since the existing property is under 1,500 square feet. So they'd be existing nonconforming, but unless they increase the floor area ratio by 10 percent or more, they wouldn't have to bring parking into conformance.
And they are increasing by more than 10 percent?
Yes.
And that's why the parking has to meet today's requirements now?
Exactly.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing I wanted to note. As you recall, when we are going through the zoning code update, we propose a new process called a minor deviation that would allow another process for the Planning Commission to grant exceptions without making more difficult variance findings. Interestingly, this project would qualify under that process. Unfortunately, it's not available for us to use today, but I did want to point it out that we have been looking at these situations, trying to figure out a way to get more flexibility. Unfortunately, it's not a tool that we have available yet.
And for the benefit of the audience or the applicant, when do you anticipate the new zoning code will go into effect?
Well, unfortunately, this project's in the coastal zone, so there's a wild card there. My hope is that locally, we get adoption this fall, hopefully by November, but then that'll kick off a, most likely, a multi-year process with the Coastal Commission.
So that's going to be a while. Before I open the public hearing, I just mentioned that we got some written communications from one or two people who can't be present today. One was requesting that we put up the orange, whatever you call it, so you can see the proposed addition. Okay, so I will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Hello, Frank Fenton, local architect. I think I'm kind of uniquely qualified to speak about neighborhood context since, I actually lived and worked in this neighborhood since 1985. That whole time, I've been either a practicing architect, intern, or student. How am I doing? Pretty good so far? Since 2003, I've been on the city's architect, on the Arkansas Review Committee. So I have a pretty good feel for neighborhood and local kind of context and character. In your package on page 94, I have this letter explaining why I think you should consider a variance. And in that letter, I referenced a few of the city's zoning ordinances. And without meaning to, they, all three ended up being the purpose of the zoning districts, the purpose of the R1 district, and actually, the purpose of Arkansas Review. All three of those talk about providing open space, light and air, traditional qualities, and special consideration given to development to ensure that it's compatible in size, mass, setbacks, open space with existing residential designs in the area. The purpose of Arkansas Review is to maintain the character and integrity of neighborhoods by encouraging the developments that are in harmony with the neighborhood. If you see our streetscape of the first page of my drawings, you can see that we've got detached garages on either side of us. There's also, let me see, hold on. In your package, page 85 at the bottom, shows our streetscape with detached garages on either side. And then there's a drawing that shows neighborhood context on page 80. And then there's a drawing that shows neighborhood context on page eighty-nine that shows three detached, single-level old carriage houses adjacent to our site, two on the east and one on the west. Also in your package, like Ryan was showing, there's some buildings that are complying that have the covered parking that are right up in the front, like on Opel Street and all through the jewel box, that don't look too good at all. You got like this, you know, garage door, four feet, fence, four feet, and other garage doors.
If I might focus you just a little bit, Mr. Fanton.
Oh, almost done.
Okay. Well, then I'll focus you.
And I just wanted to give you guys, these are included in the packet, but I just wanted to give you these couple of different drawings. This is what I was talking about on Opel Street, where you just end up with this big flat face with the eight feet between the garage doors compared to detached garages and purpose, like the actual purpose of the residential district. Just highlighted on there. So to me, the reason that you have variances is so that you can use discretion and try to save some of this neighborhood context. That's an old, original carriage house from nineteen twenty-seven, still serviceable and giving like a bigger sized setback and more light and air, which is included three times under the purpose of the ordinances for Capitola. I also have with me, Mr. Lucetti, the owner.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lucetti, and my wife and I, Nancy, own the home at five oh five five Jewel Street. Just want to say a couple of things about why I'm here, because I don't sincerely understand all the nuances of the zoning and all that, but to just give you an idea of why we're here to begin with. We bought the house in two thousand nine, and we bought it for its character and its cottage feel, and we bought it in the jewel box for the same reason. There are many houses in the area that have the same feel. And we did a small remodel to it in two thousand eleven where we redid the shingles on the outside and some interior things of that nature. We have three children and two grandchildren. They all love to come to Capitola. So as the family grew, we figured out we needed more space. So our objective was to come up with a plan where we could add some additional bedrooms and allow our whole family to come and enjoy it together. We especially enjoy the neighborhood and the neighbors that we've had an opportunity to meet and get to know. I think that from a layman's terms or a person's perspective of it, what we're asking for, unlike the previous applicant, is for a smaller garage and a smaller driveway instead of a bigger sign and a bigger monument sign. We're asking for a smaller one, and we're asking for approval of a variance for an existing condition. I'm not coming to you asking to build a non-conforming structure. It's an existing garage and existing driveway. And our alternative is to demolish it and move it to the front because the lot is not wide enough to get everything we need. And the existing house has already been remodeled, and I don't want to tear the whole thing down to start that process. So it'd be to move it to the front. And what that, right now, we are not using the full allowable space of a setback in the front. We like the fact that the house is setback and we have a nice yard in the front, and we'd like to keep that if possible, as opposed to tearing the garage down and starting over in the front. We went to the Architectural Site Committee with our plan, and we got favorable feedback on it, and the recommendation that we do pursue this. We wouldn't be here taking up your precious time today if the Architectural Committee had said they didn't like it. So, you know, it's with that that I hope you find it acceptable and able to grant us our variance, and thank you very much for your time.
I have a question for Frank, if I could.
Okay.
Frank?
Frank, we have a question for you.
And Ryan, can you go back to the slide where you show the increase in footprint? So that was it?
Oh, to the?
This one?
Okay.
So it's my understanding, the blue part is an increase on the ground level?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that increase a requirement to support the addition on the second floor? Or is it?
No, that's just like getting a better dining room and a slightly better living room.
Okay. Second question, is there a way to take two feet off that side of the house without violating the rest of the design so you have a wider driveway going to the garage?
There could be, except for, Mr. Lucetti has basically already rebuilt the whole back of the house behind that red, behind the proposed upper floor is all new and the kitchen and everything.
Okay.
So it'd be sort of, you know, destructive use of time and materials to just fit within some narrow confines.
Okay. But structurally possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to address this item, please? No, 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 that's fine. Now you, now you can, you were a big help. You can sign in now and give us your name.
Okay. My name is Sue Draper, and I actually live next door to this project. I have, I've been an owner since the early nineties at five zero six five Jewel Street. And prior to that, my best friend lived in the home that is now Jeff and Nancy's. And before that, it was Anna and Irvin, and that was since nineteen thirty. And so I'm so used to what that house is, I'm really struggling with the idea that you would change the feeling of our neighborhood. Jewel is so unlike Garnet and other streets that have all gone two-story and all gone fronted with garages. And actually, I'm in the middle of doing a little addition, and I opted not to do a greater addition just to keep the charm. And I understand people need more square footage. I understand they have larger families, but actually, I really applaud you, and I really want you to keep it the way that it is. And we really need that because that's the charm of where we live. People walk in that area. People are social. I mean, it's something that we need to have. And our front yards are like our family rooms. We welcome people. We talk to people. We're social. It's the ambiance of the whole area. If everybody has a garage in the front of their house, there's no entry, there's no welcome, there's no feeling of, you know, come on in, be part of where we are. So I'm just really hoping that you'll see me as objecting to the new plan, or however you want to look at it, and that you'll consider what we have there. If you go down that street, you know, the house next door is a little, is a small home, then we have a big house, and then there's another small home after that. I mean, it's really quaint, and it's really unusual. When I say small, I mean they're like single-level homes. And so it's not all built up, and it's not all garages in the front. So my appeal is that you'll let us be adorable.
Thank you.
I speak for three of the neighbors, Peggy Gretchen next door and Pam Stavial on the other side. So between, right here, you see everybody surrounds the house. Sue and I have known the house a long time. I've lived there forty-five years and knew all the people in that house in the past. I hope Frank was not the guy who designed the flat-top house behind Lucetti's house. That house is the biggest eyesore out our window you could ever have. That thing looks like Frank Lloyd Wright designed it. It played great in Arizona, but I gotta tell you, to look at it is one ugly house. The faster he can put this house up and hide that thing, the happier we'll be. I mean, the Jensen-Washington House, you know, on Prospect, that looks like a reformatory, all right, with all the little cell wheelers, it looks better than that house. And the other thing I want to say for, thank Frank for, I'm sure Frank didn't do the other house. The end of Jewel, right where it dead ends in Prospect, that house had a shed roof that looked like a back house, and it sloped out like this, I don't know if you remember. He now, if you go look at it, he has five gables on that roof, and he broke it down and actually lowered the roof. I mean, he enhanced our neighborhood with that so much it's unbelievable. When I look at what he's done for Jeff, basically the same roof design. I love it. You know, after seeing that thing behind him, I mean, you know, in that house, when he remodeled it, he kept the same character in that house as it had before. You know, when I think of Capitola, I think of saltbox houses. I don't think of houses that belong in Arizona. The other thing, the three of us, we don't want the garage in front. We want to leave it where it is. So if we can leave it where it is, we'll be very happy. And Jeff's a very talented builder, does great work, and he actually can give Mike Tramini a good run on cooking Italian food.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address this item?
I just have one more clarification.
All right. We'll give you this. Usually allow the applicant to respond to other comments, but since they're all favorable, it's okay.
Yeah, okay. So just real quick, to your question about what happens if we take two feet off, it's right through the new kitchen that I remodeled last year. Anything's possible. Whole house can be torn down and started over. But the reason we're approaching it this way is that's the part of the house I'd like to keep and not have to start over on. And then second, Ryan, you were going to clarify finding B for me today? Remember, we talked about that? Could you make sure you do that?
Those are draft findings. You know, if the variance does get approved, I would change that not to say that the application will maintain the character.
Mr. Lucetti, I had one more question for you. I just remembered, when I saw that photo of the garage, is the garage being used as a garage?
No.
Is it intended to be used as a garage?
Well, not at this time. It will be in the new plan. Yes, right now, my wife uses it as an art studio.
Do you have any objection to the proposal that the door be enlarged and the sink be taken out?
I don't have any objection, although I'd like to ask to consider the door be widened to eight feet to match the compact stall as opposed to ten feet, because ten feet, we'll take it all over. But in, to answer your question, our intention is to convert it to what it needs to be in order to do this project, so both the garage door and the sink and everything go out, and we go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and commissioners?
I had a question for staff, and it was about the garage door. Is ten-foot like the code for that? Because I don't, it seems rather large for the width of the garage door there.
No, the code doesn't actually specify width of garage doors, specifies width of garages. So, you know, the garage needs to be a minimum of ten feet to fit a covered parking space.
Standard door is eight, right?
Yeah, I think we could accommodate eight-foot wide garage door there. That seems like it would, it would work. That's all I had.
Okay. Comments on the?
I'm glad to see some neighbors come out in support because, you know, the parking issue and why we have these codes with our driveways and covered parking is because of parking issues. While it is narrow, it still meets the intent of the parking issue to me. And I agree with the neighbors that I'd rather see the character of the home be left there and leave the garage. I'm rather, I like big garages myself, but I totally agree that it needs to be left in the back and be used as a garage. There's some letter here that says that it was being used as a nanny's corners, but I think with the conditions that we put an eight-foot garage door and, and I really don't care about the seam because I have one in my garage, but that it's actually used, actually could be used as a covered garage area, I could live with the variance with those conditions.
So I have a whole bunch of comments on this one, and I went over and I looked at it three times, and I do think it's an adorable house. And I think that the design that you're proposing is a beautiful house. My concern is, and I'm glad that you have a picture of the Explorer down that driveway, because when I looked at it, I didn't think there was any way you could actually get it down there. And getting it into the garage still doesn't look to me like it's possible. So for, to use that garage as a covered parking space, for me, I have a hard time getting there. Even if you increase the width of the door, I don't know if there's enough room between the back of the house and the front of the garage to get a car into it. But what I think I just heard you say is that the existing door, in your mind, is wide enough and doesn't need to be increased?
No, if it went to an eight-foot door, then I would be fine with that.
And what size is the door now?
Seven feet.
I have too many numbers running around in my head. Okay. So that's probably possible. There were a couple of comments in the letters. One of them had to do with blocking ocean views, and I just wanted to make sure that he gets part of the record. We protect views of public corridors, but private views is not something that we protect with our code. The size of the addition on the second floor is not really big enough that you could reduce it at all and make much of a difference. And given the fact that the kitchen was just redone, it doesn't make sense to me to try and slice it off to meet the variance. So I'm going to sum it all down and agree with TJ's comments that I could, I could live with the variance the way that it is stated.
Variance creep.
Well, this is a different kind of variance, and you should have had a Prius parked in that driveway instead of your truck. But, you know, it kind of puts us in a difficult position because if we followed the letter of the ordinance and didn't allow the variance, then we would lose some of the character of old Capitola. And to me, that structure, that garage is part of that. Because the alternative would be that potentially this whole structure could be torn down. The owner could do that. This project is in every other respect and compliance, and we would have no ability to stop it. And we would lose more of the old character of Capitola. And that's why I look forward to maybe the new zoning codes that would give us some more flexibility to preserve the older structures in the community, but at the same time, trying to address the issues about parking. My greatest issue was about would the covered parking structure be used as for parking? And so, but if we have some assurances that it will and widening that door, and I think I would rather compromise and approve the variance so that we can preserve as much of the integrity of that charming old house and the detached garage that's with it. And I would propose, I mean, the sink, I would maybe suggest that we maybe modify, if we could, that stipulation that it be maybe an industrial sink, because it's not unheard of to have, you know, a sink in a garage for industrial purposes, and, but not the vanity that's currently there that makes it look more residential. So those are my comments, and with that, I could approve the variance.
So I found a lot of irony in this application. So I found a lot of irony in this application, because if we redesign it so it meets the codes, we lose off-street parking, which is kind of unfortunate. But I also agree with the staff report that it is difficult to make the finding of special circumstances. But I have one thought in that regard, which is, this is not designated as a historical house, but I keep hearing about its age and its charm and so forth. And so, when we have a historical property, we, that is a special circumstance that allows us to grant variances. And I think that we can stretch that in this situation, because that's really what people are saying, that it's the charm and the age of the house that justifies keeping the parking the way it is. And it's also, I'm also influenced by the fact that in a year or two, the new code would make it easy to get this approved, much easier. So it'd be kind of unfortunate if we had to deny it for technical reasons now, and we're moving, it's kind of counter to the direction we're going. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this report with a variance change to an eight-foot door instead of a 10-foot door, and then I guess remove the sink or change the sink. I don't really have an issue over the sink issue myself, but that we make it, I guess the real intent here is to make it so it's not used as a living quarters would be the concern. The sink isn't a concern for me, but industrial sink, is that what you like?
A shop sink?
A shop sink.
Yes, yeah.
Was that clear enough? I rambled there, so, okay.
Okay, so the motion is to approve with the variance conditioned upon an eight-foot garage door replacing the existing seven or seven-and-a-half-foot garage door, and some sort of sink change being made.
There you go.
Okay. We'll need, in terms of a finding, does the Commission want to go the direction that I suggested in terms of a variance finding?
That the house represents the character of the neighborhood without it being historical, it's been around for a long time.
The age and character of the existing property are special circumstance that justify the granting of a variance. Is that okay with everyone? Add that to your motion?
Sure.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Could I speak on something that Linda's brought up just a minute? The view issue in Capitola. It's interesting, I know, as an attorney, I just tell you quickly my 45 years of dealing with this issue. When I first came here in '72, there was an orchard behind my house. The lady built a one-story house, Lyndicky bought it and moved it off, built two-two-story houses. We used to watch the boats go in and out of the harbor, all right? Well, I didn't say much of that, because we had a view of the Capitola wharf.
Okay, Al, we have a public hearing, and a lot of people have been waiting a long time.
So anyway, the two-story doves, and at the time, the issue was if you don't own the air rights, which you're an attorney, you have no rights at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to our last public hearing, which is 2205 Wharf Road, a minor land division to create two lots of record, design permit for a new single-family residence, and variance to lot design standards for the property located at 2205 Wharf Road in the residential multifamily low-medium-density zoning district. Staff report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, and good evening. This application for you is for 2205 Wharf Road, and as Chair Newman just stated, it's for a minor land division, design permit for a new single-family and a variance. I want to take a minute to look at this slide. Right now, the, you're seeing a slide of the zoning map, and the lot that we'll be discussing tonight is highlighted with a blue around it. There's quite a variety of zoning in this area. So just north of it is two R1 parcels, single-family. South of it is Woolsey Court or Woolsey Circle. It's a six-unit development. It was under the same zoning previously, RMLM, and then it was developed under a planned development. Across the street is another project that is condominiums, also under the exact same zoning, except it has an additional overlay of automatic review. Surrounding the property to the west is Mobile Home. There's an easement that goes through the property for the mobile home for fire access. And then Wharf Road is a kind of a winding road that goes down between the two, along the road there. So just a real mix of what's been developed. Also, Francisco Court is a PD that was developed, so it's a little higher density below, and then we have our public library. So now we'll jump into the project. The applicant is proposing a new lot for a single-family home towards the front of the property along Wharf Road. First, going to go through the design standards, then I'll bring you through the zoning code standards for the lot area and the requirements, and then we'll jump into the subdivision standards. So the new design is for a shingle, a new single-family home with shingle siding. The shingle siding will be stained. There'll be four-inch window and corner trim and a belly band that will be painted white. These are the side elevations of the home. Now go through the lot area and dimensions. Within the RMLM, to create a new lot of record, the minimum lot size is 5,100 square feet. The dimensions of a new lot must be 50 feet wide minimum and 100 feet in length. This application was on the June hearing and was continued because it, at that time, did not meet the minimum length requirement of 100 feet. It's been revised to be 100 feet, and there'll be an access agreement over the driveway to make, to bring that into compliance. Also, the site area per dwelling unit in the RMLM is 4,400 square feet. So first, Lot A, this is the existing lot, so towards the back where the triplex is. The current size of that is 14, a little over 14,000 square feet. The minimum requirement for three units is 13,200 square feet, so it's in compliance with the minimum lot size requirement. For the new lot, for the single-family Lot B, the minimum lot size has to meet the 5,100 square feet, which it is in compliance with. It also is just one unit, so it has to meet the minimum lot area per dwelling unit of 4,400 square feet, so that is in compliance with the minimum lot area. And now we'll go into the lot width and length. So the minimum lot width is 50 feet. This application complies with 56 feet. The minimum lot depth is 100 feet, and the application is 100 feet deep. According to the definitions of lot depth, it is the horizontal distance from the street line or front line of the lot to the rear line measured from the mean direction of the side lot line. So we're saying that the front lot line, when we get into the definition of what front lot line is, it states that it's the dimension of the lot abutting the street. So this application is requesting a variance to the lot dimension standards in order to have the front of the lot, rather than facing the street, to face internal to the shared driveway, so on the south end of the lot. And by granting that variance to allow the front lot line to be located on the shared driveway, any other of the technicalities regarding the terms for lot width, it all comes into compliance at that point, once the front lot line can be established from the shared driveway. To grant a variance, there has to be special findings that the strict application of the code will not deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under the same zoning classification, and that it also would not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations. So unique conditions for this lot. It's a steep lot. There's a change in grade from the street to the proposed Lot B of 10 feet, and then an additional five feet to the rear lot. There's also a unique circumstance that there's emergency access and egress from the mobile home park behind it onto Wharf Road. And the steepness of the lot would be a challenge. There'd be a lot of grading that would have to be done, and a lot of retaining that would have to be done in order to create a new access point onto this lot. Examples of others enjoying this privilege, there's the neighboring property of Woolsey Court. It's a private street. It's not a public road, and there's six structures. So this was under identical zoning at the time it was developed, and it was developed as a PD, and it's one private street that has, gives access to six single-family homes. The other example is River View of Capitola Condominiums. That's just across the street. They have one access into these condominiums, and a little bit different in the structure of it, but in the fact that it's a condominium, but still one access that is shared, off of Wharf Road, and identical zoning. Yesterday, on July 19th, we received a letter from the neighboring property owner's attorney, and within that letter, the attorney makes it clear that Capitola's municipal code limits the variance procedure to zoning, and it does not apply to the subdivision ordinance. And I just want to, for the record, state that we're not applying this to the subdivision. We are applying it to the zoning title. The applicant is asking for a variance under the zoning section of 17.18.090 for lot area and dimensions, and also within the zoning title, the definitions for really front lot line, and then all those other definitions come into compliance. And then also within the letter is that for the finding of special circumstances, it states that it cannot be made, and is stating that the applicant is attempting to create a self-inflicted hardship, of which, I'll just go back to the unique conditions that staff has identified regarding this lot, the first being that it's a steep lot, and so that access point how it is today is the most gradual access point into the lot and favored, and also that there is an existing emergency access and egress. When it comes to, now we'll go into the subdivision criteria. When it comes to the requirements for a subdivision and the lot area and dimensions, there, the application was changed to create 20 feet of frontage along the roads. That came into compliance. Under the first standard, the size and shape of lots shall be in conformance to any zoning regulations effective in the area of the proposed subdivision. The Planning Commission has the authority under the zoning title to grant a variance to the standards that I previously mentioned. If the Planning Commission grants that variance, then we can make a finding that A is in compliance with the subdivision requirements, because a variance will have been granted. And it's also important to note that there are many circumstances throughout Capitola of flag lots that exist in unique circumstances in which the, there have been exceptions granted to the, to the lot dimension standards within the zoning code. Next, there was public comment submitted about the fence, and when the item was continued at the last hearing, I was asked to bring back photos of the fence. So I have a couple photos here. This fence was installed at the time that Woolsey Court was developed. I did not find the exact fence permit, but I can say that with almost certainty, because it was shown on plans that there would be a fence between the two properties. Here's another picture of the fence. So it's in relatively decent condition. The neighbor had asked that the Planning Commission consider noise impacts of the new single-family home, and possibly doing a more of a stacked block for this fence. That condition is typical for a commercial development. We would require that a type of wall to be built, but typically wooden fences work for residential developments. It would be hard for staff to make a connection between a single-family home and the need for a very expensive wall. Within the minor land division, the length I had mentioned of the lot has changed to 100 feet. One item that was not in the staff report that I'd like to bring to your attention is a new condition, is that with a 100-foot lot depth, there's a requirement of a 20-foot, or 20% rear yard setback. The applicant, when they changed the lot depth, they did not change the lot, the rear yard setback. Right now, it's at 19 feet. The home would have to be decreased by a foot to come into compliance, so I'd like to suggest that if this is approved this evening, that there be an added condition that requires, at the time of building permit, the design to have a 20-foot setback. And finally, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve Application 16108 based on the findings of fact and the conditions of approval as amended. And I also, there was a RADA that went out yesterday with the additional findings for the variance, so thank you.
Any questions of staff?
I had a question. Katie, in our definitions, is there a definition of the word "street"?
Street is a public way more than 20 feet in width which affords a primary or principal means of access to a budding property. So by having the word "public" in that definition is the reason for the variance to the terms for the front lot.
What is the nature of that right of way? Go access, yeah, that frontage road, or is it a private road?
For Wharf Road?
No, not Wharf Road.
It's a private driveway.
It's a private driveway.
Private driveway, yeah.
Is it under an easement? Is there joint access easement?
There is.
Okay, thank you.
So I can't make any sense out of that part of the subdivision ordinance that talks about the 20-foot public road unless it can refer to the internal roads in a subdivision, which are offered for dedication but may be not accepted, because otherwise every subdivision is out of compliance.
I think you're absolutely right. I think the attorney for the neighbors, you know, went down a rabbit hole and found problems in definitions that were never exposed before, but I think the city has historically approved these types of subdivisions for decades, and it's really a matter of the word "public" being in the word for frontage.
Any other questions of staff? If not, before I open the public hearing, can I have a show of hands of how many people would like to address this item? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so three-minute time limit. Anyone have any problem with that? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to the applicant's representative first.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dennis Norn. I represent the Chris Wright family, and actually, he owns, he's doing a land division. He owns, he's going to own both lots here. And it is a private road goes out of there. If we look at the history of the city, there's probably been a flag like, lot like this approved every year for the last 45 years. There's hundreds of them out there within our jurisdiction. And so this has never been a problem in the past. You're not granting privilege to this person. You haven't granted to everyone else in this community. And so I'm here to answer any questions, and the applicant agrees with all conditions of approval, and we will reduce the house by the one foot and make it conform to rear setback. Thank you.
My name's Miles Hollinger. I'm an attorney in Capitola, and I represent Mr. Wright. I just wanted to clarify a couple things regarding the variance. The first is that, I just want to be entirely clear that Mr. Wright is not asking for a variance from Section 1624-170, which is in the subdivision ordinance. And Mr., the letter that we're parking submitted yesterday assumes that we are and we're not. And we think we comply with subdivision E of that section that says lots without frontage on a dedicated public street of 20 feet or more will not be permitted. Agreeably, that language is a little vague, but we think that, that language, I think a good interpretation of that language is it's defining what a flag, flack lot is. It says you can have a lot, but you have to have at least 20 feet of your lot fronting the public street, and I think that's the implication, that that's defining what a flack lot is. And I think that's the implication, that that's defining what a flack lot is. Secondly, I think Katie's slide missed one of the sections we're asking for a variance from the strict interpretation of. I'm not sure, but I think she left out Section 1715.110. So that would be included in our request. And that has to do with how you measure, the rules for measuring and determining lot dimensions and setbacks. So it's just to be consistent with the other definitions. And then finally, there was, I submitted a letter on May 31st that was not in the, in your packet. That was responding to a letter from the Woolsey Court neighbors prior to our last planning commission meeting, where they were complaining about noise and asking for a wall. So I just wanted to make sure that gets in the packet and gets in the record. So I brought another copy for you. And Mr. Wright is here. If you have any questions for him or me about the project. I don't have any more comments.
Before you leave, could you clarify that additional variance that you're mentioning so we understand what we're doing here?
So we're asking for a variance from these different sections, these different definitions in 1703. Point 390 is about lot depth. Point 410 is about the lot line and what the front lot line means. Point 450 is about what lot width means. And point 620 defines what street means. But there's-
That's okay.
Okay. And then in addition, in Section 15, 17, I'm sorry, Section 17.15.110, that sets forth for how you measure and determine lot dimensions and setbacks. So I think that needs to be read with the definitions.
So let me just simplify this. I think the planner mentioned that if there's a variance to, or a clarification of, that the front of Lot B can be on the shared driveway. Does that take care of your additional variance request also?
Yeah.
Okay, it does. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one question. Katie had made reference to an agreement letter for the shared use driveway. Is that something that's being done?
There, between this, between the two lots, there will be, there will be a-
Okay.
There will be an easement.
I'm talking about the use of the driveway coming into the property.
The current driveway coming into the property is subject to an existing easement-
Okay.
-with the neighbor, Mr. Taylor. And then there's also an easement for emergency vehicle access for the mobile home property, or for the, yeah, the mobile home property behind.
I understand. I missed, I think I just mistook what Katie was making reference was the, between the easement, between the two lots. I got it.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Michael Levine. I'm a Capitola resident, Capitola business owner, and voter in Capitola. I had the privilege of representing their rights when they purchased the property originally. Just wanted to speak in support of their application. They've done a thoughtful remodel of the existing structure on the property. I referred them to Dennis because I knew he was known locally for very tasteful, modest designs. I think they've been incredibly patient through the whole process. They've worked cooperatively to the extent that it's been possible with the neighbors on all sides. They've worked cooperatively with every agency that's had any jurisdiction over the project. They're super-nice people. They've been as accommodating as possible. And I think it's a good project, and it deserves your support.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Newman and members of the planning commission. My name's Natalie Kirkish, and with Whitworth Parkin, we represent Peter and Melody Taylor. I first would like to, I acknowledge you received my letter, our letter about the, why you should deny this application for minor land division. And while the staff and applicant has said that they are not requesting a variance to Chapter 16, what are they, what they're saying is that they can, by receiving a variance to Chapter 17, they are able to comply with Chapter 16. By changing the definition of, the front lot line is allowed on a shared driveway instead of on a dedicated public street. So in this case, the House does not have frontage on a dedicated public street. That requirement must be met for a subdivision to be made. And for instance, in a subdivision that does contain streets, the subdivision map does dedicate those streets to the public, whereas here, we have a shared driveway. And so the only frontage is on the shared driveway. Because of that, the findings required for a subdivision cannot be made. And really, this was the intention to prevent a flag lot. Flag lot is a lot that has no frontage, only a driveway. And I think that was really the intention here, to prevent the creation of these lots. Well, there may be a lot of lots like this in Capitola. The intention of this subdivision design requirements is to prevent lots like this. I think also, it's worth acknowledging that this driveway is very narrow. It's creating a dangerous condition. It's already dangerous as it is, and to add additional traffic on such a narrow driveway really does create a dangerous condition for Mr. Taylor and his wife, and for the future residents here. So I think it's clear that the, they're not requesting a variance to Chapter 16, and they can't meet the requirements of Chapter 16. So the subdivision cannot be made. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding your point. So you're focused on this requirement that says lots without frontage on a dedicated public street of 20 feet or more will not be permitted. In the way I saw the subdivision designed, there was 20 feet of frontage.
The 20 feet of frontage is on the shared driveway. It is not on the dedicated public street.
Can we put the map back up?
And this is why they've requested the variance to the Chapter 17 provision.
I got that part.
To allow the front lot line on a shared-
See where the arrow is in the green there?
Yes.
Isn't that the public street?
See the gray shaded area? That is the shared driveway. Oh, no, is that incorrect?
No, no, it is the shared driveway.
Yes, so the gray shaded area is the, is the shared driveway. So as you see, there is no frontage on Wharf Road.
So who owns the property to the east of that property line?
My client does.
Well, okay. I'll let your client address this too, because he seems to be-
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some photos that could help if I can bring them up there.
Please come to the podium and give us your name and sign in and-
My name's Peter Taylor. I'm the resident at 2225 Wharf Road. Let me just quickly sign in here. I have four, a couple of photos. Effectively, the reason I want to talk to you is about safety. They reference the fact that there are two other driveways, two other, I should say, two other properties in the vicinity that share driveways. True statement. The inference, though, is tremendously misleading. Those other two driveways, two-lane traffic, 25-foot wide, they're trying to force this traffic down a 14-foot, one-lane road. It is dangerous. If anybody's trying to leave the property and somebody's trying to come in off of Wharf Road, it's an accident waiting to happen. I've had, I've lived at this place for 30 years, and I can't tell you the number of times that I've nearly lost my life getting in and out of my own driveway. There is zero visibility from my house of any traffic coming to or from 2205 Wharf Road. They do not touch Wharf Road at all. There is no way to get on that property from Wharf Road. It is accessed 100% through my shared 14-foot wide driveway. I would ask you that if you put four residences on Mr. Wright's property, which is effectively what'll end up there when he's done, using a one-lane road, would you allow that? I say it is extremely dangerous. As I said, it, there've been near misses so many times over the 30 years that I'm going to take this as far as I can. It's my family's safety at risk here. If you count out the number of cars and parking places that are ultimately going to be next door to me, all coming down my driveway, it's an outrage. I mean, really, take a look at those photos. There's no way you can compare my driveway with Woolsey Circle. I mean, remember, Woolsey Circle, six residences, six. When this project gets done, if you count my residents, five of us, sharing a one-lane driveway. The reason that you require a two-lane public street as frontage is safety. And this is flying right in the face of it. If Mr. Wright had a 20-foot street going straight from Wharf Road up to the mobile home park, he wouldn't have a problem. And to say that this is a topographically challenged situation, I'm sorry to use this word, but I say BS. My property, you could drive from my, from Wharf Road to the back of the mobile home park. The Whites to the right of me can do the same thing, and Woolsey Circle to the other side of him, all of us can do the same thing. And his property is 50% wider than mine. And I can do it. And so can Mr. White. White's 80 feet wide, I'm 80 feet wide, and they're 120 feet wide. And we're all the same distance back to the mobile home park. So I beg you, please do not approve this. I see this as you giving him special privileges if you allow him to have all this access down a one-lane driveway. Whoever said that this is safe, you need to have that guy recalibrated, because there's no way it's safe. If this was his house, he would be up here standing screaming bloody murder. Please, please do not approve this.
I think we have a question for you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, if I may, could you give us a little bit of history about the easement and-
How it happened?
And how it, right, because you've already got the situation where-
Sure. So what happened was way back when, a guy by the name of Haro Wetzl owned all this property. He took what is the Whites, which are 2235, and my property, 2225, and he broke them off as separate lots and sold them. The 2235, they had to put in a driveway. There's also, I don't know what you would call it, an alley that runs up to the back of the mobile home park. And then I, the alley keeps on going, but the asphalt stops sort of where you get to the mobile, not the mobile home park, the back of the auto dealers. So there's a, an alley there that the Whites used to get into their house. The next is my driveway, which they use and I use. You could stand there and look all the way to the back fence and see that before I put in a garden fence, you could drive all the way to the back. And of course, Woolsey Circle drives all the way to the, to the same elevation as they've got to be at the back of those lots. So to say that it's a topographical challenge, I'm sorry, I just don't buy it. To say that it would be safer to have all this traffic dealing with a one-lane access rather than their own two-lane access, I'm sorry, that, that, there's just no way you can make that argument. It's way safer when you've got two-way access. People can come and go at the same time. There used to be a lady who lived here. So when, getting back to your point, when I first moved into this house, there was a single-family house back there. They had put in a granny unit for a relative. So there was a husband and wife and the, I don't know how old she was, 60, 70-year-old retiree. And that's the way it was for a long time. And they were so concerned about their own privacy that they had a chain link across the driveway. And we loved it, because that meant every time they went in and out of that property, they stopped. They came to an absolute stop, because they had to get out of the car, get their key, go open the lock, drop the chain, go shopping, come back. Or when they got out, they put the chain back up again, and when they came back, they stopped, under the chain, got through. So we never had any issues while Haro lived there with, I'll call it, near accidents coming and going. The one exception was the little old lady was, I don't know, she wasn't always paying 100% attention, and she could get distracted. And so she came down one day, and she wasn't paying attention to the fact that my wife was coming from the library and was making a turn into the driveway, and she came down and blocked her. My wife couldn't clear the traffic in Wharf Road because this woman was right on her bumper. It's like, lady, back the hell up!
Let's move on.
So the point is, it's not safe. And that's the way it was until it was, the Haro Wetzl sold it.
Thank you.
I don't believe it's reciprocal, that it's reciprocal in terms of, you mentioned, is it in both deeds? I don't believe it's in Mr. Wright's deed. The only place we've been able to find any reference to an easement is in my title, and it doesn't say who it's with.
Thank you.
And I believe that was in one of your previous packages, a copy of the easement.
Before we have the applicant respond, let's see if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to address this item. If not, give the applicant an opportunity to respond to some of the comments that have
Yeah, I would, thank you. First of all, the driveway going up to Mr. Wright's parcel is, it's not unsafe. The driveway has been approved by Public Works and the Fire Department and has, it's bulbed out to allow for passing-
What?
-under the plan. Secondly, if there's, you know, we would dispute that there's, that there's a safety issue right at the shared part of the, of the driveway, at the curb cut. Because this house is only going to add one, one single-family house. And I think the staff report said the traffic engineer estimated nine or nine and a half trips per day over a 24-hour period. So the impact of additional traffic is going to be really minimal. Regarding the, the existing triplex, I just want to clarify for the record that these are not three single-family houses. It's a triplex consisting of one three-bedroom unit, one one-bedroom unit, and a studio. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, one more thing. The, I mean, we disagree with Mr. Taylor's interpretation of how you mentioned frontage. Frontage is measured by the property line along Wharf Road. And we think it's obvious that we've given, parcel B now has 20 feet of frontage along Wharf Road. You measure it from the property line, and it doesn't matter if there's a shared easement in that area.
At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and see what the commissioners have to say. Anyone care to start?
I'll make an effort at it.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, it seems that we had a variance request concerning our zoning ordinance that's been conflated into a safety issue. And I'm not sure if we're well-equipped to deal and address those questions. And maybe that's a matter of the private easement owners and about overburdening the easement and whether or not this particular project does that. But when I view it, just in terms of whether we have the ability to, I think, grant a variance from, and from my interpretation, it is about, because it's not, there is the required frontage on the public road, Wharf Road, but it was about how the dimensions of the parcel were being calculated. And, and it appears that our zoning ordinance kind of can, is very strictly written where it's- it's only measured in one direction, in terms of width and depth. And I do believe that that is something that the commission can grant a variance for, and I think this project would qualify for that, in just in terms of, because I, I don't see, from that perspective, what the difference is between whether you measure it, you know, horizontally or vertically, in terms of the required dimensions of the lot. It meets the required size. And I think just the language is kind of conflated in terms of how we get there. But I think for our purposes, that doesn't change the minimum lot requirement for this particular project. So focusing on that, I'm not sure how to deal with the safety question. I think those were some legitimate points that were made by Mr. Taylor, but I'm not sure if this is the body to address that. So I would be inclined to approve the variance.
Well, it's been said that, I didn't, what was it said? I think that Chairperson Newman said, I haven't seen a project that I don't like. Why I don't like this project?
Don't know that you don't like.
Yeah, that I don't like. I don't like this one, because, I'll tell you what, I don't have an issue with the way the lot dimensions are. I don't have any issue with the design of the house. I think all that's great. But I, I have a lot of concern and empathy for where Mr. Taylor's at. And I read the letter from the Fire Department. When you said the Fire Department signed off on safety, well, I spent thirty-two years in the fire service, I want to see who would sign off on the fireside saying it's safe. That's not what the Fire Department said. And so, and for the Public Works, I'd be surprised if they said, it's not a safe access. I've been up that driveway at least four times in this myriad of ongoing discussions with this property. And I could, it's not a safe, it's not a safe driveway, it's just not. So to say that is, is the issue for me, and that's why I don't like the project. I have no issue with the home. I have no issue with the variance of changing what we call the front, street frontage. I disagree with staff, unfortunately, with this one on their Woolsey Court and condominiums. Those are very two different accesses, very safe accesses, stop signs, two-way in and out. And I also disagree that it's, while it would be a challenge, it's not that it would be enable, it wouldn't be able, they would not be able to put in a driveway on their property. Yes, it would cost some money, but from, just from the topographic area, it's not that it's not doable. So that's why I don't like this. It's not an easy fix, because I'm empathetic with Mr. Taylor. But having said that, I don't know what the easement rights say. And if the easement right gives them the right, by all rights, the variance issue for me is not a big issue. So this one challenges me primarily because of the safety issue.
So, yeah, I don't even know how to respond to that, because you were a fireman. But when I read the, the letter from the Fire District, it doesn't say that they are concerned with it. And if we weren't doing a subdivision, the property could be built with the, this plan anyway. So it, for me, it meets the intent of our code with the, the issue of the subdivision. I'm not an attorney, and I think both sides, the attorneys have, have made good cases. Sam put it really well, and I think from, from everything that I know, looking at our ordinances and how we can grant a variance, granting this variance is, is an easy, it's an easy one for me. I don't have a problem with it at all.
So, in the period of time this application has been coming through, I have paid a lot of attention to the subdivision aspect of it. And I want to, by the way, I want to compliment both sides, and they're bringing to our attention some interesting issues relating to this, and I appreciate their passion and cogency. But at the end of the day, I think that they've designed the subdivision so that it complies with the subdivision ordinance. And the only issue is some very esoteric design interpretations, which apparently all fall in place if we just say that the front of Lot B is where it says "front there." And I don't really have a problem with that. I certainly concur with everyone here that we've all visited the site, and we all know that this is not the easiest driveway to get into and, or out of. And that's true, and some others too, though. So the additional traffic that would be generated by this additional lot, I don't think is really the straw that's going to break the camel's back there. So I'll entertain a motion if someone cares to try one.
I'll move approval of the project as presented.
In terms of the, because I suspect this may not be the end of this, we should be very careful in terms of how we address the variance and the variance findings. So maybe we should ask the staff to help refine that motion in terms of the variance.
Sure. I would suggest that the motion include the additional setback requirement of twenty feet as one, and then also to utilize the revised findings that were distributed on July nineteenth for the errata for Item 5B.
So it would be the variance as, as articulated in the original staff report with that additional twenty-foot setback issue and the errata to include the findings? That'll be part of the motion?
Yes, that'll be part of the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's have a roll call. May I?
Can I add one? And also, as Mr. Dullinger had suggested, also adding to that Section seventeen point one five point one ten of the R1 standards for setbacks, if you'd like to include in the motion.
Agreed on the second?
Agreed.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Chairperson Newman?
Yes. So that passes unanimously. I'm sure that Mr. Taylor and his counsel know their appeal rights. Thank you. Okay, thanks, as to Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, I just have one item for you, and that is that we are going to suggest canceling the upcoming August meeting. It's rather a short turnaround, we don't have much in the hopper, so we are suggesting you take some additional time off that night.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
No complaints.
Okay. That's it for the Director's Report?
That's it.
Any Commissioner Communications?
Hey, just thanks to Ryan. Good luck in the future. He's been a great person to work with here, so.
Thank you.
I hope we find someone to replace him as well. Good luck in less gaps.
Stop and say hi when you come back over to the beach.
I will, thank you.
I have one question. And I'm just going to ask the question. September meeting, we're going to have two meetings that week. Is there any way to combine those two meetings? Is there any way?
I don't think so. The agenda for September seventh is looking pretty long. Katie will be flying solo that night, Ryan, of course, will be gone. I have to go, return to help my mother through a surgery, so I think it'd be a lot to put on, on to one night. And I expect the zoning code will be at least a couple of hours of discussion.
So the meeting's on the seventh and the twenty-first?
I think it's the sixth and the seventh.
Sixth and the seventh.
Oh, the sixth and the seventh?
Yeah.
The sixth has already been noticed, right? I think I've already seen information.
Uh, we, we published on the website, I don't know if a public notice has been mailed yet.
The sixth, at six P.M.
Okay.
And we can't move either meeting out of that week?
If we had to. We'd probably, we'd probably bump it out a month.
Are you saying you can't make it at all? Are you wavering? Okay, well, we're.
It's going to be a big sacrifice.
You can do it, you can do it.
You're going to owe me big if I make an eye to that one. I'm just saying.
We could also, if you'd like, for the zoning code update, if you'd like to submit written comments, and we could meet beforehand, I could go over with you what I have received about six public comments at this point. You know, and maybe getting closer to that, seeing how many public comments we've received, they've really been, there's no major considerations at this point for the zoning code update other than a second request to extend the transient rental over at Capitola Avenue, but not as far as the first time that request was made. But otherwise, it's minor tweaks to fences and.
Okay, my meeting is skipped.
Set your priorities.
Ouch!
But I'd be happy to meet in advance, and then you could decide.
Okay, so we'll adjourn to September.
I do.